Great. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee Meeting and Special Meeting of the Board of Directors of Marin Water on this February 15th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, good morning, Director Larry Kush. I'm sorry. It's a morning. Director Ron G. Kush.
I won't take that personally. And I am here.
Thank you. I apologize. Director Larry Russell.
I'm here, too.
Thank you. Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chair Monte Schmidt, absent, and Chair Jed Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. I'd like to ask the directors to make a motion and a second for the adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
Terrific. Any public comment on adoption of the agenda?
There are none. Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Chair Smith.
Hi.
Any public comment on non-agenda matters? And for Terry and then any board comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, anyone from the board? Okay, I'll add one. And Ben and I have talked about this, but I believe we've had a first and a second to have the administrative side of the Finance and Administration meeting present at every meeting. And I think that was a year ago that we had that first and second, and I'd like to bring that back to the board to see if we agree that we should do that. I think Vicky, or we've had presentations about one in every two or three meetings. And the importance, I think, cannot be understated for us to get a better sense of the energy with the staff, the ideas that are coming out, the hiring that needs to happen, the churn that might be happening. This is not a check to see how we're doing wrong, but it's more like how we can learn and be supportive. And as a small example, I think, you know, the idea of doing that whole strategic plan did not come from me, although I pushed it hard about a year ago. It came from a staff member who I met, who said, wow, we haven't had a strategic plan that's been approved and done as thoughtfully and incredibly well done as the one that Adrian just did in like 10 years. And so more board engagement with staff, the better, as far as I'm concerned, in any way possible, not just in these meetings, which I think is important. But it'd be great to find out ways that we can connect with individual members or groups of members in the staff. Every time I meet someone or I see a driver on the street, I stop, I talk to them, and I learn something. I think we had two whole organization events last year. Unfortunately, they were set on dates that I could not attend. So I don't really have any formal or informal way to connect with staff members, and I would love to do that. It just would help me, I think, do the job better. So the one idea is to make sure that we do bring in some level of personnel review in these FAC meetings. And the second would be find ways to have the board more involved with getting to know the staff.
Jed, can we make quick comments or responses? Yeah, I mean, I fully support what you're, what you're, you know, the direction that you're trying to take, particularly engagement with staff in all types of settings. I was able to make one of the, you know, the barbecue that we, that was held last year, and it's super interesting and achieves a lot of what you're trying to suggest with respect to just building better rapport and getting feedback from staff in different settings. I do, though, just wanted to offer some thoughts on having regular HR-type presentations here based just on working with Vicky a little now on setting up the evaluation procedures and the time scale of activities. It's given me a better sense of what's on her plate, too. And so I think we just should be conscious of what we're asking of staff for these types of settings to not maybe, you know, just add to their pretty full plates. That's my one, my one, you know, just kind of caution on the very regular requirement of staff.
Looking at both of those separate items, the first one in terms of engaging the administration side here, I think it would be good to do that with some regularity, but some defined deliverables. I think one of the interesting things would be new hires come to the organization, we get a quick brief on them, or retirements. And so we have an understanding of the churn, of how things are going, and just the actual, how we're doing billing jobs. And then the second piece, you know, we'd love to be able to engage outside more. And I think those types of events fill that need for me as well.
Yeah, I'm completely cognizant of over pushing the staff to do stuff that might not be helpful. We don't want to do that. I think the specific request that I had for today was just a list of open hires and who we brought in. It has to be already on Vicky's desk, so I would imagine that would take five minutes of prep and a 10-minute presentation. And that was really all I asked for, but I think that would be good. Who are we hiring? What are the open hires? How can we help? What are the positions that are important? What's the churn look like? And then obviously, we have some of the surveys and other, and other things. I'm also super curious, Ben, your thoughts and in other ways that we are engaging in staff in ways that we hadn't before, you know, bringing food in or other ways that we're trying to help listen and learn from folks? Because I think that really, in the end, it's the staff workers that are doing, that have terrific ideas and can help us.
Yeah, I think it all makes sense. And there's a lot of energy and discussion about this coming year and a range of key initiatives, I think, very much in line with the discussion of the board, just, you know, including kind of a revamp of our recognition programs and thinking about those. They've been in place for years, the same kind of format and kind of substance. So how do we refresh? Other recognition programs where, as we brought to the last FAC meeting, Vicky brought an update, we're currently releasing the engagement survey and plan following that to form an employee committee to look at the results and identify next step actions. And really, the list goes on and on. We're developing a new program for new employee hires. So there is absolutely a lot of rich information. My suggestion is we proceed with the ad hoc that we talked about and map out this coming year what it may look like. And in the discussion, of course, we'd be balancing the interests of the board and staff resources and what that looks like and may mean. And from that, we could plan at the next ad hoc to bring to the full board what we discussed and what it looks like and see, maybe there are some differences of perspective. Maybe we, you know, reach full alignment in the ad hoc. And I think that would really inform this discussion, if that works for you, Chair Smith.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, moving on to the regular items. Any more comments? Matt, Ron G., you good? Okay. They're moving on to the regular items and and I'd like to have in 4A, the minutes for the Finance Administration Committee meeting from January 25th. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Great. Any public comments on the minutes?
There are none.
And a roll call, please.
Director Kush. Director Russell.
You stepped out.
Sorry. Director Sampson.
Hi.
And Chair Smith.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. All right. So now we move on to item 4B. And this is with Brett Upandall, our Head of Finance, to present.
Thank you, Chair Smith. My name is Brett Upandall, Director of Finance. Today, we have three items for you, beginning with the monthly financial update. And if it seemed like we were just here a couple of weeks ago, it's true. We're kind of getting the calendar back reset here. Typically, we meet on the third or the fourth Thursday of each month. This month, it kind of got up to us a week early after, and I think you may recall, the January report was the first one we'd heard since October, right? Because we didn't have a November, December. So we're still kind of getting the calendar right here on FAC reporting. Kind of a long way of saying, there's not a lot of change from last month. This is one of our kind of shorter months in terms of revenue coming in, being the middle of the winter, and also being one of our smaller collections. So not a lot of change here, but I will still go through the report. Happy to answer any questions along the way. First item that we touch here is revenues district-wide. It says at the top there, 58% of the fiscal year. That is seven months of build activity. As you can see, you know, top line revenue or water sales being obviously the biggest line item. That's pretty much right on track there, 56, almost 57%, just about where we'd expect to be this time of the year. Other revenue, obviously, much smaller. It's largely kind of grants and small revenues ahead of the game there a little bit, but again, a much smaller scale. Total revenue on the operating side, you know, just under 58%. So again, just right where we want to be, meeting expectations. Capital revenue, more limited, more fixed basis on our CMF largely. So as we might expect, that's tracking even closer to the budget at right at 58%. And so all in all, district-wide for operating and capital, bottom line, they're 57.5%. And again, that's pretty much right where we want to be at this time of the year.
Sorry, Brett, just quick. You wrote it in your, in your written notes that we would expect water sales to be at about 59.5% at this time of the year. It looks like we're at 56%. Is there, is there anything significant in that difference?
Well, kind of as you're looking here at the breakdown of all the components of water sales, we're within a percent or two. It's not significant at this point. I mean, we're really kind of at the low kind of, you know, part of the winter time. So the more significant values will be as we get to the summer and as we start to get kind of more of that summer use pattern as it comes around to us. So within a percent or two right now is kind of where you expect to be. No one can foresee perfectly all the consumption and different revenue factors we have. Fortunately, as we get to the expenses, you'll see they're balancing out. We're also low in expenses. So kind of on the whole, not surprised. We're on track.
Yeah, I think the part you can't foresee is the rain. You know, that's the variable that the other stuff's pretty mechanical, but the rain changes the way people approach their irrigation, if irrigating at all.
Yeah, exactly. And how late that goes into this, into the spring and early summer. Yep, exactly. And, you know, you could probably add the weather on top of that, too, right? Overall heat. And so we deal with that every year. That's the variability of kind of the water sales. And so that's kind of the perpetual balance that we're in is balancing the fixed fee revenues and the variable revenue and trying to make it all work out. Again, fortunately, we're within a percent or two this year so far at this kind of around halfway point, seven months through the year. Again, this, the data you're looking at here is on a two-month lag, right, compared to actual behavior? We have a two-month billing cycle. So we're really just beginning to kind of see what happened to consumption patterns and revenue patterns in the January, kind of late December, early February timeframe. But as we know here in the left, water sales right at 57% of the overall budget there, the bottom line. And kind of, you know, digging one level deeper into that of where we'd expect to be, we're 96% to where we'd expect to be at this point of the year. And so that's your point, Director Kush, we're a couple percent behind where we'd expect to be. And that's just kind of goes with the variation, and we'll have to keep a look at that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. The other service charge there in the middle, that's more of a fixed fee. It is a fixed fee. So that is right there on the 98% of actuals. Watershed fee this year, it got turned to variable. So that kind of tracks a little closer to water sales, but doesn't quite have the same tier kind of volatility to it. So that would be a little bit more kind of straight-lined as we'd expect. And then we've added CMF here, CMF revenue to the far right. Again, that's a fixed fee. So it is kind of where you'd expect to be in total. So as I look at these, again, I don't have a lot of concern at this point in the year. A lot of, a lot of the kind of real dollars will happen in April, May, and June. And so that's what we're really looking to, you know, did we meet our expectations? And, and what do we need to do on the expense side to match it? But right now, we're looking pretty good for revenues.
Even if you did have concern, there's not a whole lot you can do.
Not a lot we can do now. I think, you know, as, as, you know, as I kind of started to mention, there's, all you can really do is balance the expense side. And so that's kind of where we're tracking this time of the year. Do we need to make any actions? Or are we in the, in the okay range to keep on going as planned?
How are we doing with the delinquents?
Well, so we have some good news there. So delinquents, they kind of come, you know, we've had a couple of pretty funky years with COVID, obviously, and different programs that we've had. And so we did just get notice from the state government that we'll be getting more COVID funding for our delinquent accounts. And so for many of our customers, it's a very targeted time period. And so we're still finishing the calculations. But for many of customers who had difficulty paying their water bills during the COVID time, during that last six months or last nine months of the year of the COVID period, we'll be able to reimburse their accounts. So our delinquents will be going down again. So they started to rise up during COVID. We got the first round of funding, wiped out a lot of those. Now they're starting to kind of creep up again, and we'll wipe those down again. And so it'll really be kind of the next cycle coming out once the federal funds and the state funds are expired, that we'll have to keep a better track on that.
Yeah, it's interesting. I'm glad we reimbursed because we obviously could double dip, too, if we wish to. I was quite surprised. I was reading an article about PG&E, the paper, yesterday or the day before, and it said that statewide, 25% of the PG, the electrical accounts are in
In arrears.
Arrears.
Yeah. Well, it's been a hard, you know, couple of years, I think, for a lot of people across the state. And it's just kind of the reality of it. And fortunately, California and the federal government have had, you know, stimulus funds and kind of relief funds. And so that, I think, as we go forward the next couple of years, that will be a concern, I would assume, going forward, just, you know, across the board.
The state is manipulating our contracts right now to slow down cash flow because of the deficit. So be aware that the state may be kind of a funky partner in this, at least what I've seen. I haven't actually seen anything happen yet, but I've got a lot of chit chat from the clients, especially the money people in the contracts.
Yeah, the state's budget is very much more volatile than any kind of local budgets that we have. And I think the projected deficits at that level are huge right now. I think fortunately, the state has some pretty big reserves they've built up as well. But when they do choose to pull back, to your point, I think they pull back pretty fast and pretty hard. Certainly, you know, it's mid-point of the year, they can stop a lot of the action right in its track. So I don't think we have a heavy dependency directly on state funds, but I think
I just got in this
Yeah.
For the delinquent. Yeah, it's funny. As I understand it, California operates on like a dozen people actually pay the taxes.
The capital gains and whatnot, the
On those really, really big ones, yeah. And they've gotten sort of used to that, you know, that there's these guys that are paying billions of dollars in taxes. And, you know, that's kind of an unstable model at the best.
Yeah, no, I think I would agree 100%. The capital gains model that they have is certainly, you know, is great when it works. And it's, once it doesn't work, it puts them in a real bad spot. But I think in their defense, the governor has known that for the last 10 years or so, and they've built up quite a few reserves. It's just not easy to kind of balance out the year-to-year on that. And you have to still kind of stop until you see the, the other side come back around.
That's for sure.
Yep.
Heard about some significant cuts, for example, not a program where directly involved benefits of the zero program. It looks like that's going to be slashed.
Yeah.
So it's probably just
Yeah, well, they're stuck.
State fees will go up, too.
Yeah, they're stuck with the same problem we're stuck with, right? It's like you got X dollars and you got Y expense. You got to do something.
Okay, so water consumption, again, kind of going to the, you know, uncertain nature and the volatility over the years. I think, you know, this chart we show every month, this chart kind of compares a level set as of January each year on build consumption. And I think you can see that kind of gradual step back there from 22, from fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 24. We're at about a 4% increase compared to last year. And that is consistent with our kind of more conservative water sales assumptions we put into our COSS and into our rate pattern. So again, we didn't, you know, count on a big, you know, comeback or bounce back. We thought it would be a slow and steady return, and that's what we're seeing. So again, consistent with the model and kind of matches the rate structure that we have in place. I would just point out, you know, also how much of a variability is from not only the 10-year average, we're about 9% or 10% below the 10-year average, but certainly below, you know, what was there in terms of fiscal year 19, 20, and 21? And you can kind of almost plot in your mind what revenues were like during the same time, right? They're going to have a significantly similar relationship. So we're still way behind that kind of overall trend where we were, you know, five, six years ago, pre-pandemic, pre-drought, in terms of overall consumption and then the related revenue. So I think, you know, having that long-term perspective and just knowing the ups and downs come is kind of helpful. And it's part of our challenge is to kind of minimize that volatility over time.
Yeah, quick comment here, Brett, because I think this is important. We've had several public comments about our reporting for the, for the rate increase process and that we were referring to budget and not actuals. I think this slide is really, really important because what it shows is that in fiscal year 22 and 23, we had significant decline in our revenue. And that that decline forced this agency, agency to be in a very precarious position, that the actuals that we were working with made it such that we could not hire 27 people. We could not do some of the really important work that we needed to do. And that when
And we're running a million dollar a month
Deficit.
Operating deficit.
Or at least shortfall in revenue. And so when you look at 21, you recognize that, that our rate increase doesn't even hit that number so far, at least. And so, you know, I think you have to look at the larger picture here, not just that one couple of years of actuals. And drought has a massive impact on our revenues. And our customers stepped up. They reduced. That was important. And drought impacts the entire agency. And so just looking at those two years as numbers, and then you should increase from there, is not the reality that we're faced with. So, well, I think it's important to kind of address this maybe in the future and go into a little bit more detail about our thought process there.
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly right. I think the points you're making, that, you know, anything, when we're comparing actuals to actuals, you know, looking to the last two years is not a good comparison because that was not a natural place for the district to be. And, you know, when we see a 20, you know, a 20% plus drop in revenues as a utility with a long-term horizon, we can't just cut 20% of expenses off the top that quickly. So it really is an unnatural state, as you mentioned, to be in. We had to do what we could in the short term, and that was, you know, to the detriment of the organization. And so we're still kind of coming out of that going forward. But I think your point is well taken, that probably this longer-term revenue look is probably important as well, as opposed to just the water sales. And so I can work with staff to, you know, as we kind of get to that mid-year projection, to see where we are and where the track would have been, you know, kind of if we jumped off from that fiscal year 20 or 21 point.
I know, not following the units here. It's 13,000 acre feet? I mean, we used to run numbers like 30.
So this is just through seven months of the year? So we'll get, we'll get to that there. Well, we won't get to the 30 this year, but those numbers in the middle there would have got to 30
Okay.
By the time they got there. So again, the expense side, we've kind of touched on this a couple of times. You know, many of our expenses are, you know, not fixed in the classic sense, but, you know, would cost that we need to spend each month to keep the business running, where we are basically on track here, where we expect to be, again, you know, just under 58%. There's always a natural level of savings in some of these areas, and certainly timing-wise at this point of the year. But personnel savings, I think, to your point there, Chair Smith, we were, you know, we're at personnel services, I should say, we're at 53% of the year. You know, that kind of implies of about a 5% savings rate in that line item. And that really is kind of us getting back on track of hiring, kind of digging out of the vacancy hole that we had in the last two years. Maintenance or operations, you know, that, that is a little bit lower than we'd expect now. But as I dug into some of those numbers, and what that really is, is we have contracts in place and just haven't spent those funds yet. And so this is really, you know, kind of going to be spent here as we get into the springtime, similar to capital, but all the, a lot of these are kind of consultant contracts and studies that'll, you know, the bills will come in late in the year. The rest of the items there, you know, 58% on financing costs, that's a flat, you know, trajectory throughout the year. And capital allocation is kind of a back office transaction we do with a capital fund. So bottom line and operating 53%. So we're, you know, going to have a savings there, most likely. We'll have a better idea for the range of that savings in the next few months as we kind of round out the, the kind of the winter time and get into the spring and meet with the departments and talk about their budget. On the capital side, we do include incumbences in that line because we do expect to spend those, if not in this fiscal year, certainly in the next fiscal year of our two-year budget. We are a little behind there. So we've had some supply chain kind of slowdowns, and we're really ramping up for some of our bigger expenses. But, you know, 52% or 51% as it shows there is
Right. Could be in the range.
Briefly, excuse me, note that an upcoming operations committee, Alex is going to be bringing a detailed update on the capital program that will talk about some of the delays. We in fact just got a big shipment of these 500 widgets we'll talk about that allows some pipeline jobs, little connectors to move forward. They, all these projects were being held up with that. But anyway, we decided to order instead of
The new one?
What's that?
Is that the new one that Alex talked about?
Yeah.
The change?
Yeah, yeah. And what they did was pretty clever in that we were just trying to order a small amount for our need and realizing we're probably getting bumped from, because our orders kept getting canceled. So we ordered a big batch and we'll just store them. So it was pretty smart. Anyway, got delivered. So you'll be hearing about some of these projects moving forward.
Great. Brett, we've talked about this before, but I think for this slide, and there was the one, a couple of slides to go, it'd be really good to show what we are year-to-date versus last year year-to-date. So it's interesting to show percentage of the total budget, but it's hard for me to tell with each of these rows whether we're, where we're ahead and behind.
Yeah, I can try to pull a slide like that together either for next month
Or just one more column.
Just compared to last year as percentage-wise?
Yeah.
Percentage of budget?
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Jed.
Yeah, that can be done. Okay, so that rounds out the, the kind of the financial summary. So revenues through the first seven months are consistent with our budget. Operating expenses are a little bit below budget as we just kind of covered there. And then capital expenses, a couple percent even more as we're, again, kind of coming around the supply chain issues that Ben just mentioned. And then we have the kind of natural timing of construction cycles that ramps up in the spring and the summer. Total water consumption, below the budgeted amount, but just slightly. We're 4% above last year. And again, about nine, you know, almost 10% below our historical average, which is expected, but again, still kind of part of the overall trending. So that wraps up my report on the finances. Happy to take any additional questions.
Any, any comments from the board on the, on the financial update? All good? Public comment on the financial update?
There are none.
Okay, great. Well, that was for information only, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, 4C, which is the quarterly investment report for December 2023.
So quarterly investment report, again, this is by policy. We come to the board each quarter. This would be for our reporting as of the end of December 2023. So as of that point, as of December 31st, we had a total investment portfolio of 75.3 million, of which about 60, 60 million was in our LEAF, our Local Agency Investment Fund. Within that fund, we did see an overall interest in December of 3.93, which is almost double what it was last year when it was closer to 2%. And so again, all good news. We have had a total interest earnings so far this year of just over $1 million, 1,088,302. And again, that's well in excess of prior years and in excess of the budget for this year. So we're looking good on our overall investment portfolio. We expect this to continue throughout the rest of the fiscal year and probably into next year as the Fed has not made any action on rates yet. And the way that the LEAF portfolio is structured, there's some much longer-term tail on that. So we should consider to continue to see rates in this 4% to 5% range for the next year or if not more, depending on when the Fed acts. So it's all good news there. I think there's been chatter, obviously, you guys have heard probably about when the Fed will cut rates. I think the inflation measure came out yesterday. That was a little higher than the market expected. And so that leads some to believe that the Fed will hold steady even longer. I think if you look back at Fed rate actions, they tend to hold steady until they don't, and then they come down fast. And so I think we'll just kind of be on our toes and like the rest of the world, you know, kind of watch. And, you know, fortunately, LEAF manages most of our investments. And it's a pretty, you know, well-balanced program, so we don't expect any big changes, but we'll certainly keep our eyes on it going forward. So that is the
Don't forget it's an election year, too.
And it's true. Yes, there are other factors at play. But nonetheless, there's not much we can do there other than to kind of make sure we're doing our job to keep our money in the right place. And I think in this case, it's just good news. So any questions?
Any other board comments? All good? Any public comments?
There are none.
Great. All right. Well, that was, once again, for an information item, and we'll move on to 4C, which is an annual review of our policy number 33, investment policy.
So this is the final item that I have for you here today. So again, this is by board policy. We come each and every year to review our overall investment policy. So the last one was the quarterly report. This one is our annual review. We typically try to do the annual review here in the winter months. Last year, we did it a little bit later, but typically, we do it in the winter months. The finance policy that we have here is pretty comprehensive. It's attached to the staff report. I think the main, you know, as it's written here, our investment policy strives to appropriately manage overall investment risk. The primary objective of our investments are to ensure safety and liquidity, and then followed by return on investment and public trust. And so that is, you know, the overriding principles of all of our investment activities as it's reflected in our investment policy and in our practices. I think the idea here is that, you know, we want to make sure when we look at this each year, we're scanning around to see if there's any legislative changes that we need to incorporate back into this policy. We're looking around to see if there's any guidance from any of our leading agencies, kind of the international and/or national agencies on how to adjust these over time. And then thirdly, we want to make sure that they're working for us and that they're, you know, functional. And so, you know, staff has looked at this, and at this time, we have no recommended changes to the overall policy. It really is pretty broad with, with what we can do in the sense of, you know, within, you know, the objectives of safety and liquidity and return. Again, as I mentioned in the last item, we typically put all of our funds into LEAF as it accomplishes all of Uh, again, as I mentioned in the last item, we typically uh put all of our funds into LEAF as it accomplishes all of our goals there. And so we don't see much need to change that at this time. Uh, however, we do make sure each year we take a good look at this and like like I said, scan for any legislative or legal or regulatory changes. And at this point, staff has determined we have no recommended changes. And so that would be a recommendation to the board is just to adopt or to continue to keep the policy as is.
Great. Any board comment? I've reviewed it reviewed it, Brett, uh, in detail, and I'm supportive. I think it's a very thoughtful conservative policy, and we're not taking huge risk here. So uh, uh, I'm very supportive. Any public comment?
There are none.
Great. Well, that's again, uh, information item, uh, and then we'll move on to upcoming board meetings. Or meetings.
Oh, uh, the next uh Finance and Administration Committee meeting um is on Thursday, March twenty eighth at nine thirty A M.
Great. That's all. We're all set. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Nice, efficient, narrow and straight meeting.
That's right.
Thank you.